I'd like to call the November the 19th, 2012 work session for the Frankfurt Board of Commissions to order. First order of business is to have roll call.
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Turner? Mr. May?
Here.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so we're almost over here, four out of five. Next item, our citizen comments. And so we have a policy that I think most people understand. Any citizen would like to rest the board on the topics that are on the agenda for today, feel free to do so, and if I can keep comments in about five minutes, you mind. Okay, moving on. Now we'll have the discussion of tentative agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Well, before you have tentative agenda, of course, some of the items that proposed for first reading are going to be discussion topics today. Does anyone have any questions over the agenda as it is?
I don't.
No, no. Okay. Okay, now the next is the city manager's reports and staff comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Since we met last, I've had several different meetings. One of the meetings was an update on the process of the downtown traffic study.
Mm-hmm.
Met with the engineers at Transportation, Public Works, and a couple of concerned citizens. And we discussed the process and some of the things that Transportation needs to look at. And we did tell them about some of our concerns and what some of the desires were from some of the downtown business owners. So, excuse me. They have that information, and they're doing their modeling now. So, once they pull that together, then they'll take it to the next phase.
Which will be what?
More meetings. More meetings. And Jeff can explain the process. Mr. Hackmark can explain the process a little better from his engineering background. But, you know, hopefully, you know, what we'd like to do is not study the thing to death where we can't afford to implement any of the changes that they request. So, we'll see how that goes. Been to several luncheons and dinners. American Public Works Luncheon with Jeff and some of the members of Public Works where they were recognized, and also the Rhodes Scholars where some individuals were recognized that we'll recognize in the meeting on the 26th. Planning breakfast with the Health Department on their accreditation. Went to that with the mayor and several of the stakeholders. And last week I was in school for my in-service, Department of Criminal Justice training. The only other thing I have is we probably ought to talk about December meetings, since one of our meetings is on Christmas Eve. And I hate to be a grinch, but I don't really want to show up then, if I can help it.
Would the, we would continue to have a regular one on the 10th? And then...
Want to call the voting meeting on the 17th?
Pardon me? Seventeenth?
Could we call the voting meeting on the 17th then?
See, I mean, I think that's a good idea.
Do it at 12:30 on the 17th?
Yeah.
Which...
Me, or the rest of you?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Pretty standard.
Mr. May? Okay. We'll do that.
Excellent.
So we made on the 10th and the 17th?
10th and the 17th.
Yeah, 10th and 17th.
Sure.
Okay, department reports. Mr. Hackmark, Public Works.
He did get a haircut, didn't he?
He did get a haircut. I think maybe he's a short timer. I don't know.
Discovered this morning, we have several items on the agenda this month, but one item we overlooked to send to Ramona, and that is we have a grant to repair the roof over at our transit garage. And so we opened bids and have a low bidder for that project, and we'd like to put that bid award on the November agenda. So with your permission, we'll add that to the agenda this month.
Okay, do you need the opposition to do that? Okay.
Chief Possage, do you have any report?
Each year there's a national fallen firefighter's memorial ceremony at the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. And this year, well, this is actually the second year, that Frankfurt Fire Department's honor guard was one of the several honor guards from across the country that was invited. So from Kentucky, we had Frankfurt, Glasgow, and Richmond. And it was quite an honor for them to represent us, attended by President Obama and a lot of dignitaries. So I just wanted to mention Sergeant Mike Felty, Sergeant Brad Kays, firefighter Gary Gephardt, and firefighter Ryan Smith were the four that went up and represented us this year. They did a great job, and we got some good accolades out of it.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dawson. Did you, why don't you discuss, no, we'll talk about the budget amendment when we get there, but discuss the draft audit and the timeline for that.
Okay. Just in case. Yeah, I sent a draft proposal of the audit to everybody, email this week, and also I sent a memorandum, and I'm in the process. I'm going to revise that memorandum to give a little more detail. But if you've got any questions on the audit report, you've got a month to look at it. Let me know. We won't vote on it for approval until the December meeting. And actually, the commission meeting for November is when the auditor will come and discuss the audit draft. So if you've got any questions in the meantime, please feel free to ask those. Thanks.
Thanks for getting that to us.
Mr. Parrish? Park's nice and quiet right now?
Good.
Mr. Donahue?
Hey. City Manager, can I have a gentleman's name?
Yep, alright. Mr. Skaaf?
I'm good.
When's Louisville Hill going to open up?
Roughly two more weeks.
Two weeks for Louisville Hill. Thank you very much. Major Deaton?
We're good.
Rebecca? Kirk, we're going to talk to you about golf here in a few minutes. Gary?
A reminder that the planning commission will be holding a public meeting on December 11th. It's the public meeting for the Second Street Form Code District and the Town Center Overlay and the Neighborhood General Overlay. There's signs we've posted. We sent a letter to every property that's affected, and there's a 30-day notice requirement for that, and we've met that requirement. Just reminding you of that. It's likely that the planning commission will table the hearing for a summary of the findings, and they don't meet back again until January. So it's likely it'll come to you in February and March for first and second reading is the likely schedule. If you have any questions, let me know.
You said it's December 11th?
December 11th, 5:30 here at City Hall. Yes, sir.
What time you know?
5:30.
Okay.
And we didn't make the, yes?
You could, my question is just regarding the other one, the sign that's on the door for 11/29, the historic information. There's a sign on the door?
Oh, we were asked, I don't know if that's the old one or the new one that's going out. The Heritage Council asked us to send out a flyer on information, and so we've sent that out to 900 and something properties.
Okay. Will any of that information from that meeting be able to be linked to the historic side from our website for people who can't attend?
The flyer is on there now, and we can put whatever information...
Like if you have questions, just contact so-and-so at the Heritage Council?
Sure, we can try to do that, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Did I overlook anyone?
Juleson.
Juleson. Your report. Sorry about that. Alright, that concludes reports and staff comments.
Okay, thank you. Now, old business, city manager's search update.
Alright. Mr. Donahue? Come on, I'll kick it off. For our last instructions from the board, Mr. Donahue and I went through the 70-some-odd applicants and brought it down to a stack of about 26 or 27?
27, I believe.
27 individuals that had some of the, either the criteria a board member expressed was important to them, or experience that they were, that the board, that individual board members were looking for relative to budget. We tried to include as diverse a group as we could from what we could tell in the resumes and reasonable geographical location or nearness to us. So, that's where we are now. We have a stack of 27. I have not gotten any public feedback on qualities anyone would like to see in a city manager. I suspect either the effort was ill-fated, or just nobody cares to tell me what they think. So, that's where we stand, and we're awaiting instructions for further, how to proceed further.
Well, as I recall, and rest commission, correct me, we were, this present commission was trying to be helpful to the incoming commission. And we made a decision we would not, this commission would not hire the person, but we would try to gather in these, all the applications, and then invite the incoming commission to come and help screen them. Am I speaking correctly?
Yes.
And so, if, I see we've got two members out there that's beyond the commission, and so I'd like, personally, I'd like to give a little direction, because if we want to do that, like follow through what we're saying, we have set a time?
Sure.
And then, what do we want to do? So, we look, we begin, if you speak...
I'm certainly open to suggestion. I'm prepared to go ahead and start working with the incoming commission to start screening this further. We don't have everybody here. Ms. Bowers isn't here today. So I'm happy to defer to the will of the four folks who are going to be serving next year, in terms of whether or not you want to go ahead and discuss this today, or wait till Commissioner-elect Bowers can show up.
I don't think we need to wait much longer. I think we should go ahead and try to get this process going, and if four out of five are here, I'm more than happy to get some input and see which way we want to go.
It's fine with me.
Who's your mate?
That'd be fine with me, too. Understand.
Is that something we should just go into closed session to discuss at the end of the meeting? And we can bring these guys in to closed session?
Sounds good to me, so, Mayor?
Me, I'd be amenable to that.
Me, too.
Just go into closed session at the end of this meeting?
Okay.
And Tommy and Robert can make it in for that.
Okay, go. Very good, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, next, now is new business. Any new business, Kevin?
Oh, I was going to ask, was the city attorney going to be here today?
I thought so, but I...
City Attorney.
Haven't talked to him at some time.
Okay.
I can check on that.
Go check.
Yeah, I had, well, I had a question for Rob under old business. They might be moved. I was just wondering if we...
Go ahead.
Well, that can wait, because that's just, I do have a question for Rob regarding, you know, an update on the CSX line that's leading up to Main Street. My understanding is that they declined our request. Here's the letter the city received. Gentlemen, after extensive internal review, this is from CSX, regretfully, we must decline your request. While this property and track bed may not be actively used today, the track is still federally regulated, and the property has been reserved by field operations. We will contact you if this status changes in the future. I was hoping we could follow up with them one more time, because they're referencing, their declination references track. So it's possible they're confused that we're asking for the stretch of line that has track on it. But since we're asking for a stretch that doesn't even have track, it's possible that there's been some kind of miscommunication. So I was just going to ask that we follow up on that, just to make sure that they understand what we're actually asking for.
If you could forward me that email?
Sure.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure the city solicitor asks that question, and I'll provide an answer for that.
I'll forward that along when we get out of here today.
Okay, thank you.
And I did have a piece in new business as well. We just learned last month that the Kentucky Supreme Court has ruled that whistleblower laws that protect government employees from retaliation if they blow the whistle on anything, that that doesn't apply to city governments. There, you know, the state law is actually relatively clear that, I've got it right here, but that no employer shall subject to reprisal, or directly or indirectly use, or threaten to use any official authority or influence in any manner whatsoever, which tends to discourage, restrain, depress, dissuade, deter, prevent, interfere with, coerce, or discriminate against any employee who in good faith reports, exposes, divulges, or otherwise brings to the attention of the legislative ethics commission, attorney general, audit of public accounts, and a number of other offices, any fact or information relative to an actual or suspected violation of any law, statute, executive order, administrative regulation, mandate, rule, or ordinance of the United States of Commonwealth of Kentucky, or any of its political subdivisions. The short version, the short version here is that these laws apply to any, anybody who's employed by the state or any of its political subdivisions. County government counts as a political subdivision of the state, but cities, being independently incorporated, don't. So the Supreme Court decided that these rules don't apply to localities. There's nothing prohibiting a locality from adopting their own whistleblower rules. So I was just hoping that we could adopt a local version of the state statute, just to protect whistleblowers within, you know, within city government.
Can you respond?
Yeah. Do you want to?
I can just...
Forward that to, or make copies in the middle of...
Yeah, here's a, this is a copy of the state, of the state law. Can I just turn this into the city manager?
Sure.
Without objection, we could just ask the city solicitor to draft a local, you know, a local ordinance?
Yeah.
And if we could...
Would it be the board's direction to draft it based on the state statute?
Yes, I do believe that's...
I think that would be, I mean, it's a pretty boilerplate.
Would that be for first reading on Monday, or do you need it?
I think ideally it would be, but if that doesn't...
It's a short week.
It's a short week, so if that doesn't happen, then first reading on December would be fine. I'm sure the next commission would be just inclined to pass it. But the sooner we get the ball rolling, the less our employees are unprotected.
Right.
Okay. Any more new business? Yes?
Well, I still had something, I guess, under the old business, which, I just wanted to follow up with the meeting regarding abandoned property, if anything came that we should try to discuss in order to try to change what's, what we have written.
There's a first reading.
Did I miss that?
There, 4.2.
If I may, staff did prepare an ordinance. We sent that to Rob, and he forwarded on to Ramona. The changes essentially is, we currently provide a list in March to the PVA and Finance, and then we submit a final one after all the appeals are over. So we went ahead and codified that in language, so that it's a requirement. And then we did add the certified mail as a requirement, so that's be in ordinance. And also that we would list the properties on the website. It's in the ordinance, so then it would be a requirement, but it would be on there.
Okay.
And as it's updated, it would be updated as well. Currently, if you are delinquent in your taxes and you're vacant, you have until May 31st to pay your taxes or come up with payment plan, and then you're automatically taken off the list. But if you, if your property is dilapidated, and you can make the repairs by a certain time, or that you had it leased for two months and we weren't aware of it, there's no way for them to provide me that information without paying a $300 fee and going to an appeals board. So this ordinance says you also have until May 31st to submit something to staff to show that we're in error, without having to pay a fine or a fee to have that done. If we disagree, then they can still appeal it.
Mm-hmm.
And that, I think, will help several of the cases we've had in the past by that being in there.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
If you, what's proposed is...
No, no, I'm sorry, I missed reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I skipped that page.
Okay. But that's what we had recommended, and it won't, partly, the recent issues that we've heard is if someone buys it February, March, April, how do they know it's on the list? How do they know? The realtors aren't telling them, the seller isn't telling them, and yet they'll get the tax come October. So the only way I know how to resolve that is to put it on the website and make it public now.
I think that's good.
So.
Any more new business?
I do have some for new business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. There've been some home break-ins recently in South Frankfurt. Most of them have been targeted at older, single women. They've been very displeased with how the police department has handled their situations. No fingerprints, no, kind of like, hey, sorry, your house got broken into. And I don't know if that's typical, or how are house break-ins typically handled?
Well, it depends. It depends on if the officer at the scene feels like there's evidence that can be collected.
Mm-hmm.
Not every house, not every scene will get fingerprinted and dusted, and the whole CSI kind of worked out to it. You know, if there's blood left at the scene usually, that would, you know, would lead towards evidence collection. Items that the perpetrator might have touched, we could have, you know, pick them up and take them in to be processed for fingerprints. But it's very, but not everyone gets fingerprinted.
Okay.
Most of them are photographed. You know, and like I say, it just depends, you know. It's a smash and grab, where they kick, you know, kick a door in, or pick a lock, or, you know, the person may believe it's related to a family member, or, you know, sometimes people just don't want to say who they think did it.
Right.
Because they don't want to unfairly blame anybody.
Right, right.
I would suggest if anyone has a problem with the way their scene was handled, they need to call the police department. Call Major Abrams at the police department?
Okay.
And we can certainly have it addressed, and then, because the patrol officer on the scene will make a determination whether a detective needs to be called, or whether the case needs to be referred to investigations.
Okay. I'll have them get in touch with Major Abrams soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Any other new business?
If we could just bring Rob up to speed?
Yeah, sure.
Right. Playing tennis? I was waiting for the 5:00 meeting, and thank goodness Randy called, and I came over soon as he called, and I apologize.
No problem. We just submitted, turned in KRS 61, 101, 102, and 103, which are the state whistleblower laws, whistleblower laws, with a request to essentially draft a local, a local ordinance granting whistleblower protection to city employees, based on that, kind of boilerplate language.
Certainly can be done, and what I'll do is just use this definitely as the template.
Thanks, Rob.
Now, do you all want this for the voting meeting this month, or the voting meeting next month?
If, I'm going to speak for everybody. I mean, if possible, I'd love to have a first reading next week, but if it has to wait, it has to wait.
No, that's no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, now, but now to discussion items. This is city manager, Golf Course report.
Kirk?
I've got a little bit of information if anyone's interested.
Thanks, Kirk, appreciate it.
That's nice. That's all. That's just basically, we're, you know, almost halfway through a five-year budget reduction plan, just, it's the update, you know, we're basically going, want everyone to guess have a copy of the original plan. The, again, the, you know, we're moving in the, in the direction of narrowing our deficit gap. Again, not quite as quick as we'd like. The revenues have, we were able to recover revenue this year after kind of a difficult year last year, but the expense side continues to reduce. I really want to thank our Golf Course Superintendent, Adam Curry, also our Parks Directors, Jim Parrish and Jim McCarty. They've really done a great job with some of our equipment purchases, and really helping us get that budget organized and really looked at. We're basically just staying on a schedule of one year, we're raising season pass rates and season cart fees and greens fees, and then the next year, we're raising the daily cart fee. And this year, we are due to raise the cart fee, the daily cart fee, $1 per round. We've got a copy of some area golf courses. We're still very competitive, even at the lower end of those daily cart fees. So I think a $1 per day fee is not going to be, it's going to still help us able to generate and get back on schedule revenue-wise, but it's not going to be a huge amount. And then the alternate year, we'd probably be looking at next year, again, just keeping according to the schedule, which is in green, just alternating that with the season pass fee possibly next year. But I think the golf course is, you know, continuing to get a lot of play. Again, a lot of positive reaction to the golf course. Everything has been, you know, the one thing, we do have some plans, again, in the first couple of pages of working a little bit more as far as we're getting, really working our... One thing, we really have a great facility for a lot of our local charity golf outings. And again, back in 2010, we actually had about a quarter of a million dollars raised just through, you know, for local agencies through those golf events. So we had a little bit of a setback last year with some weather issues, but then last year, we had a better year, and we think that we can get those promoted and help both the golf facility, the city, and also a lot of these local organizations, because they're all kind of struggling a little bit, needing those extra funds, so we hope that'll be well.
Say this will be a good week for golfers.
Yeah, we've got, anyone that has a break will be open Thursday, so come on out and see me.
I know what you're talking about, you're going to start addressing junior golf as part of the get kids moving.
Yeah, we've always had, you know, junior classes, which have been more traditional as far as, you know, strictly golf. as far as, you know, strictly golf. And then the last year or so, there's been a little more movement to add some different activities, sort of, still a lot of, you know, kind of simulating some golf moves, but using other sports, whether it's jumping or running, or there's sort of a, kind of a little semi-baseball golf game that you can play, just to kind of get kids moving a little bit and working out. There may be, you know, with the, they've noticed, I guess, the last couple of years with some, they're not quite getting out and getting active. So this gives them, gives the non-golfers maybe a little more interest in playing, and then we can kind of ease them into the golf part of it. So it's a little bit, it's a little further than just golf swing only and just playing golf. We're trying to add some other activities which will help their golf swing too. So I think that'll be a little more fun for golfers and non-golfers alike, so we hope that'll spur some of the kids to get out.
Okay. You committed by?
No, I think that's great, and I also think with, even with the youth as well, they're, when I lived in Florida, there's lots of, tons of golf courses, lots of opportunities for, for children who don't have the money to play. It's a very expensive sport, especially down there. Your rates are still very affordable for the region, but trying to get as many kids out there and have any kid have any opportunity to find something that they're passionate about is always great. I mean, it's a lifelong game. I think it's, the more youth you can, you can strike, it's fantastic, Kirk. I really hope that you can get more into the school systems, boy scout groups, girl scout groups, whatever, just get them out there.
Yeah. That's good.
Thanks, Kirk. Next.
Well, that's an interesting segue from fitness to police department fitness. Have, you have before you in the agenda a proposal to amend the ordinance that we have regarding police department wellness program.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about changing the program and calling it a fit-for-duty program rather than a wellness program, because the city is undertaking an overall wellness program that's, you know, kind of looking at different variables, the biometrics, you know, the blood pressure and things like that, weight. But the fit-for-duty plan is kind of adjunct to the mandatory fitness standards the police department has. In 1987, the board enacted an ordinance that said every officer who's employed from that point forward has to meet an annual fitness evaluation. And in 1990, I believe, '91, we implemented what we called at that time a wellness program that provided an alternative to doing a mile and a half run and some other stretching and some of the things, these activities that were approved by the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council as job-related activities. So the wellness program, one of the components was the city provided a gym membership to employees, and the other component was that employees were given two and a half hours a week off of work in order to participate. Those who signed up for the program had to participate, had to go to the gym, or participated in an activity that could be documented, and they were let off work. As the years have gone by, of course, this board has disciplined some officers that we've brought to them for not participating properly in either the fitness standards or the wellness programs. You know, we paid close attention to it, but we learned that it's really kind of outlived its usefulness. And what we're looking to do is propose an incentive-based program for the fit-for-duty. If an officer participates in this and achieves a certain level, then they would be rewarded with time, not vacation holiday, for lack of a better term. It would create a new time category, is fitness time or-
Fit-for-duty leave.
-fit-for-duty leave, a new leave category. So what I would like to do is have Major Abrams and Captain Richardson come up and explain the program, if you would like an explanation of it.
Okay. As Chief mentioned, in the '90s, when we started the wellness program, we started that incentive. And basically what we did, it was a, an alteration of their work week, basically. As time's gone on, that has become overly taxing, and we don't feel like, and Captain Richardson is our head and fitness instructor, we didn't feel like it was really beneficial. We didn't see the scores and the type of motivation that we wanted through that program. One of the main things that we liked when we started looking into this fit-for-duty program was the savings, you know, you know the saying, time is money. The hours, the man-hours that that equated to was in excess of 7,000 hours. And so we looked at revamping that and giving them the incentive to say, the harder you work, the more you perform, the more you will get. In doing so, we created the fit-for-duty program. It's still the same test, battery of testing that we used before, push-ups, setups, et cetera. There's a sprint, mile and a half run.
Vertical jump.
And vertical jump. Those six categories are taken, totals in each category averaged together, and then they get the overall fitness score. Instead of just giving the blanket adjusted time off duty, now they will have to perform at a certain percentage level, overall percentage level, and they will be classified in either a gold, silver, bronze, or a participation-only category, depending on their percentages. As I said, with everyone in the department that was a part of the wellness program, it equated to 7,670 man-hours over the year. If, and obviously, our goal is to get everyone up into this gold category, which would, with the fit-for-duty leave being accrued, would make every individual, if they got into the gold, would get 80 hours. At that, the total that would be, we're looking at the savings in the man-hours, the total would be bumped down from 7,670 to 4,800 hours. And we're thinking that that's going to help us get more officers on the street and still motivate those officers to exercise and do this type of thing, you know, on their own time and try to seek this goal. That's just a brief overview. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
If you would, explain to the board the problems that we were having with officers going to the gym, us forcing officers basically to go to the gym rather than seek their own type of activities like biking or-
Right. Well, yeah, and as Chief mentioned before, it had, we had to be able to check and see that they had been to work out.
Right.
So we had a sign-in list at the gym and at headquarters. Now, that limited them to those two areas, you know, to-
Stuck indoors.
To exercise. Right, indoors, and we're tested outdoor.
Right.
You know, we're running outside. And we have a lot of officers that like to bicycle for exercise. There was no way for us to measure and to actually credit them for that time that they'd spent doing that exercise, very valuable exercise, but they were, we were pigeonholing them, pigeonholing them in a sense to what they could do. So now this is going to free them up to do whatever they see fit, whatever worked for their, you know, their body to get them in the condition. They know what they're tested in, they know the categories, and they know the standards. And as long as it, you know, as it works out for them, we're no longer going to be requiring them to go anywhere in particular or air, or check that even.
And if they're not on the clock, they're not exposing us to workman's compensation claims. And we've had several workman's comp claims from the gym and activities related to-
Right. We had, last year in our leadership training that we go to annually, there were five-
Five in the state.
There were five cases, workers' comp claims in the state as it related to-
Exercise.
-to exercise, and we were three of them.
Three of them.
Three out of five. So, and that is what caused us, early on in the program, it was more open-ended. You could do whatever, you know. You could sign into the gym and then take off running down 460 or riding your bicycle, or come back and sign out at the gym. But with the onslaught of workers' comp claims, it just got, it got too hard to manage. So we had to lock it down and pull them in. I think that was a necessary thing that we had to do, but at the same time, it limited the officer's, you know, ability to exercising in a variety of ways.
And if I might add, this program will allow us to address our needs a little different. A program we had before, there was no, really no reward for doing better. So a person could come in, test A, and participate, if that makes sense to you. Now, on a scale, the better you are in those categories, the more you're rewarded. So I can already take stats from this year and say, we're pretty strong, but cardiovascular, we need to work on. So I can write scripts, myself or Sergeant Frazee, to these individuals and say, your strength's all right, but you need to run some more, which is really indicative of, because we have a gym membership and we've been indoors.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of these guys like to run outside or bike, so, you know, I attribute that for why our cardiovascular's so far down. And I won't say it's far down, but it could be better. Quite honestly, we're pretty strong as a police department, but we need to be a little bit better fit, so.
Right, nothing more boring than a treadmill.
Exactly.
Right. Well, and it really is not real-world application.
Right.
You know, if you take off running up a little hill right now, that treadmill's not going to be the same as it was when we started off.
But the two and a half hours that we allow an officer to take off, that's two and a half hours that this community doesn't have the officer in uniform and working on the street. And we've either had to cover it or work shorthanded. Even though it was a good trade-off at the time, you know, this would eliminate that. We would have them the two and a half hours, which is, for 60 officers, is about 7,800 hours a year, which is at an average of 35 bucks an hour, 273,000 bucks a year, as opposed to the number that they gave you if everyone hit the gold standard. And it's pretty hard to hit the gold standard. We only have-
Right now, we've got four that have achieved the gold standard, and two that we, that haven't tested yet simply because of schools and et cetera. But we, really, realistically, we know, we pretty much know everybody's fitness categories. And I think right now, we're only going to have six in the gold category, looking at a total of 480 hours of leave that'll be accrued in the gold category for this testing year.
I think I'm in the aluminum category.
What would be a gold standard?
The gold category, it's broken into percentages. Like I said, you take each of the six categories, get your score there, and then average those together. And in order to be in the gold category, you have to score between 90.0 and 100. And then the silver category is 80.0 and 89.9. That's 40 hours. And then you go down to bronze, 70.0 to 79.9, that's 16 hours. Anybody that scores under, and overall, now, I'm talking overall, anything under a 70, so a 69.9 or below, is classified as a participation-only.
How many different categories are they judged on?
Six.
Six?
There's sit-ups, push-ups, vertical jump, 300-meter sprint, mile and a half run, and what else? What am I missing?
Sit-ups, push-ups.
Oh, bench press, one rep max bench press.
Yeah. I bet you two guys are gold, aren't you?
Major it is.
They have a 50% rate and then-
Well, he hasn't tested yet, but I would put him right at the rate.
I think it's great. I think one question that comes to my mind regarding this is, you know, I think it was last November that we signed the contract with Act of 24/7. It's a one-year contract, or was it two-year? I think it was one year, wasn't it?
It's actually one-year contract with one-year extensions.
Uh-huh.
And what we did, there's still some city agencies that very much want the gym membership to stay in place, but we were starting to hear some rumors about the longevity of the gym, actually. So I contacted them when we renewed, I can't remember if it was September 1st or October 1st, and they had agreed, we're paying them quarterly now instead of annually.
Uh-huh.
So it gives us a little more flexibility. If we decide to make a decision on the gym contract, we won't be tied up for the whole year. We're really working on a quarterly basis at this point.
But you think maybe in the next quarter, we can think about, with the wellness plan, allowing employees to have an option to either gym, so that some people who want a gym membership also have families that play in the YMCA sports, and if they're a YMCA member, they get a discount for their child playing the sport, but giving them the option of whatever facility they want to choose in the next quarter, we can?
We can look at it again, but the last time we looked at it, the cost was extremely prohibitive. Allowing 16 employees to participate in the Y would cost us as much as it cost us to allow 300 employees to participate at the gym.
Have you negotiated, tried to negotiate as much?
We have, and they will not negotiate anything away other than the initiation fee.
Hmm.
It's a great idea, it's just, it's a big dollar sign out there that would have to be, a hurdle that would have to be got over. But we will work with the wellness people to see if we can develop some kind of a program.
Okay.
The wellness program's with Humana. Humana's got state government, so they've got a very large local presence, and we're hoping that that large local presence will maybe get us a little bit of, a little more bargaining power in that discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just-
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Stay gold.
I'm going to try.
Okay. Next.
Hey, next we have is the proposed budget amendment. Mr. Dawson.
Last couple meetings, last couple months, we've met, we've talked about having discussed the mid-year budget amendment, and that is on your agenda for this month. We've got two basic fundings that we provided for. One is the health and wellness program, $175,000, and $25,000 for the parks to do the East Frankfurt infield. Is there any other things that you want to add to, any questions or comments?
I guess my, I guess my only question would be for the other commissioners-elect in the room. This is a budget amendment to do two things. One is to set up a wellness program for city employees, and of course, the city's self-insuring. We expect that to save, even though it costs money upfront, you know, the more we can invest in preventative care and keeping our employees from turning in workers' comp claims in the first place, the idea is that saves us money over time. This is something we've been working on for a very, very long time. The other, the other piece of the budget amendment is to, is to fill in the remainder of the East Frankfurt pool. The city's insurer has notified us that that empty pool constitutes a potential liability for the city, and so that we need to do something with it to eliminate that liability. And the thought is that we can go ahead and fill it in in a way that would allow it to be developed later. I just bring this up, you know, I bring this up to you guys, because if anybody has a serious objection to either of these budget amendments, then we can kick the can, you know, we can kick the can to you guys. But it's kind of speak now or forever hold your peace.
We were at the meeting, we talked about, both of us were at the meeting, talking about filling in-
Sure.
I think we're fine with not kicking that can.
Okay.
The only question I would have for you guys on the wellness, because I haven't been here to apply that, is looking at a lot of studies, it's one of those sort of counterintuitive things, so I didn't know if y'all looked at any studies or not, because a lot of wellness programs don't save money, even though it, that sounds crazy, but if you look at some of the studies, they don't. So I didn't know if y'all looked at any studies that have done similar things to see what the savings were or not.
That's the, there's a fair question there, because I'm not, yeah, I mean, I know that our plan is modeled on what has come before.
And like I said, a lot of times, they don't save any money.
Yeah, you do see mixed results sometimes, I think, and it's, you know, certainly, you don't see instantaneous results. I think most of the places that have plans that work set up good three-year, five-year plans, but there's certainly no guarantee. I think if you don't structure the incentives and you don't, it's, that little standalone wellness program can't work by itself. It's a big picture.
How much money is it?
Actually, the wellness program's about $40,000 a year. The bigger part of that budget amendment- The bigger part of that budget amendment's related to, when the budget was first crafted, it was crafted, the healthcare line item, the budget was crafted with an understanding that employees' spouses that had access to coverage elsewhere would not be eligible to enroll on the city plan. And then we had a change of heart on that and decided not to implement, so now, since the budget did not include those costs, we had to put those costs back in. That's really where the bulk of that money is. It's about $40,000 for the wellness.
A year?
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's always another decision being made right now, but y'all are in the loop now.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're down to the Ethics Board proposals. In your packet, you should have an overview of some of the changes to the current ethics ordinance, the chairperson, or what, what was the new designation, the president of the Ethics Board, or the chairperson? The Chair of the Ethics Board, Dawn Hale, is here. If you'd like to come up and explain some of the, sort of, changes that the board has proposed.
The major changes are that we would like the board to be increased from three people to five people. We feel that three people are really in a position, if anything comes up, where one person has to recuse themselves, then you're only left with two people to hear a case. You get into the problem of something ties then, so we would, we would like the board increased from three to five. Yeah, members, I'm sorry. Another major change is that we would like for all department heads, as well as the mayor and commissioners and candidates, to file the statement of financial interest in the city manager. Where now only candidates and the, and the commissioners and mayor file a statement of financial interest. The next large change was the language of under-advisory opinions, which is 39.21. The ordinance currently says that advisory opinions shall remain confidential unless confidentiality is waived in writing. And when we had an advisory opinion asked of us this past year, I just immediately went to the ordinance, scheduled the meeting, and because it says it shall be confidential, I wasn't thinking about the open meetings law. And fortunately, Jill LaMaster, who's on the board and has been with the state for years, said, "Dawn, can we do that?" And I'm like, "Well, it's what the ordinance says." And so we checked with the Attorney General's office, and while we did not get an Attorney General's official opinion, which you all may want to do, we got an unofficial opinion that the ordinance needs to be changed, that as written, it does not follow the open meetings law. And so that's why you see all of it stricken on here. So the, the meeting that we would have to discuss an advisory opinion would have to be an open meeting. And so that's why all of that language is, is stricken. Now, if, you know, if you all want to get an official Attorney General's opinion before you change the ordinance on it, you know, that, that's up to you all. Let's see. I think, oh, in 39.17 for filing an investigation of complaints, we basically just said that a complaint can be submitted to either the city clerk's office or the Chair of the Board of Ethics, where currently, it's just the, the city clerk's office, which is a minor change. And that's basically the, I think, basically the changes in the ordinance itself. Mr. Moore, have I left anything out on that?
In the ordinance of that, I assume you're going to talk about the material that would be provided?
Right. Yeah, and then also in your packet, you will see some material that have just entitled procedures for employees and officers of the City of Frankfurt regarding the Ethics Code, or Code of Ethics. And basically, what we did was just for advisory opinions, the statement of financial interest, and ethics complaint, just wrote a little information that employees would be able to have possibly included in their employee handbook, that just gives them a, a simple version of the ordinance on if you want to file an advisory opinion, you know, ask for an advisory opinion, this is what you do. If you want to file an ethics complaint, this is what you do. For the statement of financial interest, it just says who needs to file one, when it needs to be filed by. We just thought that this clarified things a little bit for employees of the city, so that there wouldn't be any question on, on procedure. And then we also made just minor changes to the statement of financial interest in just clarifying what we're asking for a little bit. Because we've, in the almost six years that I've been on the Ethics Board now, we've modified it a little bit along, and this is probably the biggest modification, because I think before, you all were not real clear sometimes as to what was being asked of you. And so we've tried to be more explicit in what is being asked as you fill out the statement of financial interest. Any questions?
I'd like to thank you all for being proactive about this and putting together a list of recommendations. I'm happy to go ahead and sound off on these, absolutely agree. With the idea of increasing the board from three to five members, I think we saw what happened two or three years ago.
Right.
When you were the only member of the Ethics Board who didn't...
Right.
Have resigned when ethic charges were filed. And that created quite a, a problem, you know, for that, that entire process. So I think having five members makes a lot of sense, and especially considering that I don't want to put words in your mouth, Dawn, but I think I agree that, certainly on the board, in the absence of an actual, you know, ethics case, is, is really not not an unreasonable commitment. I know that, I know that you all worked harder than you ever meant to.
Yeah, I mean, before we had our, our case three years ago, it was meeting once a year to go over the statement of financial interest. And that was one reason why we wanted the procedural documents in the employee's handbook, because, you know, I, my term is up next month and cannot be reappointed because I've served the two terms. And so there will be no one on the Ethics Board that was there when the, the claims, ethics claims were filed. And so it gets very easily to be a thing of everybody's new and doesn't really know, you know, they haven't done it before. And hopefully, there will be another, you know, 10 or 15 years before, or never, hopefully, before another ethics complaint is filed. But if there is another ethics complaint filed, I'm just speaking for myself, I would like to see it handled a little more smoothly than, than what it was before, because no one knew what they were doing, because it had never happened before. Right.
As a, as a side note, I know that the, this is, we brought this up a few times. The Ethics Board, I guess it was about three years ago, announced that, that there was something they wanted to report to the city. My understanding is that, that until all of those ethics cases from three years ago are played out, and they're still in appeal, that that would be the time for the Ethics Board to, you know, to give its kind of final report to the city. Considering the fact that, that the Ethics Board from three years ago won't exist anymore here in a couple of months, does that, would that preclude you or the other folks who are serving at that time from, you know, coming back in, in a year or two, or however, however long it takes for all this to play out to give a report to a future commission?
I'd be happy to. I can't speak for, for the others, but when the Ethics Board got together to go over the changes, Eddie Adams and Barry Holder, who were on the board during the complaint, were kind enough to come back and join our, our meeting and, and discuss some of the, their experience and changes. So I would think that...
That's heartening.
They would be happy to. I mean, I would hope.
Well, as far as the rest of your recommendations go, I'd, I'd be inclined to support all of them, frankly. I think that, I don't think it's unfair to require financial interest statements from city officers across the board. And we are, there's already plenty of precedent for city officers having to meet a kind of higher standard than lower-level employees, anyway. I'm comfortable with, with declassifying advisory opinions. And I think that the changes to the procedure for filing an ethics complaint just makes sense.
Can anybody else get something? I've got a couple of things I want to inquire about. The confidentiality.
Yes, sir.
It says, "All proceedings and records relating to a preliminary inquiry being conducted by the Board of Ethics shall be confidential until a final determination made by the Board."
Right.
Now, it goes down a little further, it says, "If the complainant or alleged valier publicly discusses the existence of a preliminary inquiry, the Board may publicly confirm the existence of the, of the inquiry, and at its discretion, make public any documents which were issued to either party." The thing that concerns me, and we're just going to bring this up, is that when someone brings a charge against someone, if the person who brings the charge against someone lets it be known before the preliminary, then the person who has the charge brought to you them can be tried in the media before you ever have the preliminary hearing. And so with that in mind, it, would it be, I think, I'm not sure about this now, but I think the executive Ethics Board has something in it that, that the, if a person files a complaint, they file it under perjury, other, under the penalty of perjury. Do you know if that's true or not?
You mean if they file a false complaint?
Yeah, like if I, if I brought something, a charge against an employee, and, which may turn out to not be true, but, but the person who brings it, if I bring it, and I let it be known that I brought this charge against this other person, and it's gone to the media, then, then the media, being such as it is, can try the person before you ever have a preliminary hearing. So my concern is, and I don't know, Mr. Moore, maybe you can help me, I do not know, but it seems to me that if a person is going to bring a charge against another individual, because you've got loopholes in here where they could bring it out, and that they should do so under penalty of perjury. So if you, would you look into that?
Yes, in the ordinance, and of course, I'll never find it since that's what I'm looking for, Rob, you may be able to find it. It says in the ordinance, if you file a false complaint, that you can, I don't want to get the wording wrong.
Here it is, Dawn, if I could.
Okay, could you?
Sure. First of all, if a frivolous complaint is filed, then under Section 3917D, then the inquiry is immediately terminated. And under 3917F, if you knowingly file a false complaint, then you're, and you're convicted, then you would be guilty of a Class A misdemeanor. So that's the, that's the sanction that the City of Frankfurt has, is it would be a Class A misdemeanor.
Would it, would, what I have suggested, would that be appropriate?
Well, we could look and see what the, what the difference in sanctions would be, difference in punishment in conviction of perjury versus a Class A misdemeanor and a, you know, a perjury. I don't practice criminal law, but that would generally be a felony with more severe sanctions, if I can provide that information to the Board.
Would you do that?
Although if we, I guess I would know, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that when folks are sworn in to testify to the Ethics Board, they are, they are, they are sworn in on a penalty of perjury. Not when, when testified.
Oh, no, but that's not the point. Yeah, I'm talking about when, when they make the claim, before they, before they come before and testify under oath, that's what I'm concerned about.
We, we had two cases that were brought before us after the, the big case, that we can sit, well, one was, we felt not in our jurisdiction, it was a policy issue, and we dismissed it. And we had another case that just plainly was not an ethics violation, again, and we dismissed it. And I'm sure you all never heard about it, because the Ethics Board handled it, dismissed it, and it was done with, and so there was no publicity. So I understand your concern with it being made public before it really should be made public, and that was one of the reasons that we wanted the procedural documents in the handbook, is because in the case against Commissioner Carter and Tony Massey, it was public.
Yes, it was.
And, but, you know, we learned from that case.
Terrible, terrible lessons to learn.
A lot of lessons learned. And while I can't right now get into some of the specifics of that, because that case still is in appeal, if, if the case is handled correctly from the ordinance and from what we've put forth in our procedural document here, you should not have undue publicity. You know, in, in the last time, there was, and, well, I just really don't want to get into all of that right now.
Right, that'd be best until that appeal is...
Right, and until the appeal is settled.
There is one element of this, though, that I, I guess I, I think should be addressed, which is that, you know, if somebody wants to file charges against any of us, including not just ethic charges, but criminal charges, civil charges, et cetera, my understanding is that it's, it's well within that person's rights to announce that they're doing that. If somebody wants to come in here and charge me with a crime, you know, let's say they, they think I'm embezzling money from the 7-Eleven or something, somebody wants to come in and accuse me of that, they're not required to, there, there is no mechanism that requires them to keep that accusation silent. As in, somebody can come in and stand right there to that microphone and say, "I'm pressing charges against so-and-so for X, Y, and Z," and that's very much within their rights. And there are penalties for pressing false charges. There are penalties for lying under oath that are even more severe, et cetera. But if somebody's got a complaint or a charge to press, I don't, I don't think it would be at all appropriate for us to try to silence that.
I just, we got different...
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I don't think it's even legally allowable.
But practicality. If I'm just a working guy, I don't have much money.
Right.
And somebody brings something to charge against me, then they go out and let it be known.
Sure.
Then it's put in the paper that I've been charged with these things. We all didn't find out that if they've made a false claim, I don't have any money to get a lawyer.
Right.
I mean, it's, you know, it's impediment to that. So that... I mean, it's, you know, it's impediment to that. So that, that is a concern I have. I don't know.
I think there are both sides, and I, I think there's the real danger of people being tried in the press. And I think by the ordinance as it stands, it gives that safety net of the possibility of a, of a complaint being, you know, shoved under the rug. If, if you have the, the safety valve of being able to make it public, then in a case of a, of claim against one of you all, or, or whatever, it can't just be quietly shoved under the rug. So I think there, not that it would be, please don't misunderstand.
Well, you have an Ethics Board who would not sweep it under the rug.
Well, the Ethics Board has to be told about it first.
Well, you know, the, the point, I just, I just think this is such a sensitive issue.
It is.
It's very sensitive, and it can destroy people.
But I, I think there are just both sides that you have to weigh in coming to the decision.
Well, I think it's sensitive, but it's also just, for the First Amendment rights are in the Constitution, and they're not really open for debate. I mean, if, if somebody wants to say something that's true, like, let's say-
It may not be true.
Then there, and there are penalties for that, man. There are penalties for that. There are penalties for that. But let's say that somebody, I know, I'm gonna use a completely different example, but let's say, you know, let's say there's a young woman in this room who's been raped by, uh, you know, some guy named Phil. She has every right to publicly accuse Phil of raping her. And the idea that, that we could set some rules to say, "Well, you can't make that accusation publicly," the idea that she could somehow be penalized for making that accusation publicly is abhorrent. I mean, we can't, that, not only that'd be a violation of her rights, of her First Amendment rights, I mean, she's, you know, Phil's protected against false accusations. But if, if somebody, somebody has evidence of a, if somebody has evidence of a crime, especially a crime that's committed against themselves, they have every right to publicly say that. I mean, you can't, even, even if we wanted to, to control that or something, not only would be violating those people's rights, I don't think it would be legally defensible. I, I mean, I can't imagine, I just can't imagine that.
I think it's very difficult to legally stop someone from making claims outside of the ethics process. But you can include, as is in the ordinance right now, a sanction in the event that they, uh, file a false statement with the Ethics Commission. Uh, you know, you have the sanction now for the, uh, they could be convicted of a Class A misdemeanor. Now, if you want to, for lack of a better term, up the ante and say, "I think that a conviction for perjury carries more weight," if you want to up the ante for someone making a false, uh, statement, then you can do that. But I, uh, I think it's very difficult to try and, and preclude someone from, uh, from talking about it to the press, or really whomever they want to. And that's one of the dangers of being a public official, is that it's, it's more difficult for a public official to prove that, uh, someone has defamed him or her, because there's a higher standard when you're a public official, that you've got to meet to show that someone, uh, has defamed you than, say, an ordinary person has to bear.
Chief, you want to say?
Well, I, I was sitting here listening to this, and of course, in some of our discussions, we, I, I've kind of turned it back on what the Police Department does, now the Police Department handles things. But, you know, uh, if a citizen wants to file a complaint against a police officer, the law requires that they, of course, fill out their complaint, but it has to be sworn and notarized, that, you know, the statement that they're giving is true to the best of their knowledge. I mean, either you have a false swearing of an affidavit, which is a relatively minor misdemeanor, uh, you don't have to go through all the, the perjury, you know, the, the large thing about the, the testimony in front of the Board, but, you know, there's two ways of looking at it. Of course, it's, you know, for us, it's, it's, uh, protection against a police officer against false accusations. You know, if somebody says, "Well, ho, it's the worst so-and-so policeman ever," then, uh, that's fine, they can say it, but if they want you to believe it, they need to swear to it so we can have a little trial here. And I can present my side. So, you know, it, it could either be that way, or I guess on the other hand, you could take it as a chilling effect, and if you, uh, make people swear to the affidavit, or swear to the facts in their affidavit, then no one will ever come to you with their ethics complaints or whatever. So, you know, it's, like I say, that, that's what we do for police, or for citizens' complaints against police officers. Uh, it, you know, it doesn't preclude anybody from filing a complaint, but it just-
They're gonna, they're gonna-
They, they need to, you know, put it under oath, or under a number of public signature that, you know, that they swear the facts are true.
Okay. Mr. Moore, how does this sound for, for all of them?
Well, you could. Uh, right now, if someone makes an ethics complaint, they're not required to swear to it under oath. They just make the complaint, and you could, uh, you could require that. I, I will say that, uh, you know, kind of analogizing to filing a lawsuit, many times a lawsuit is, uh, filed without the plaintiff signing it as being sworn, but a lot of people file verified complaints as well. And a verified complaint, I, I bet that's probably done maybe 20% of the time, and that's where you have the plaintiff actually sign, uh, saying that they had sworn to the truth of the allegations set forth in the complaint. So that's, you know, that's certainly an option, and that is requiring whoever's making the ethics complaint to, uh, swear to the truth of his or her allegations. I, I will say that, uh, you know, that would not preclude that person from, uh, making those same allegations just, uh, to the press or to anyone. Uh, you know, and they really don't have to file a, an ethics complaint if they don't want to. They can still make those allegations, uh, uh, outside of that arena, anyway. So it's, I, I think it's very difficult to attempt to stop someone from making those kind of complaints. Uh, maybe the better course of action would be to require, when they do file an ethics complaint, it be subscribed and sworn to. That would be one way to, uh-
Well, that to me, that's more reasonable.
Like, yeah.
For frivolous complaints.
Yeah, so that's more, to me, that's more reasonable. Okay, other thing I had was, I don't want to keep too long here, but you've already addressed it, the number of people on the Board. That's good. I think that's good. Um, now, I believe the, I've, I've done a little, a few sort of asking questions, because I don't really know all these answers. But the Executive Ethics Board, I believe, has guidelines, I'm told, for a member to recuse himself or herself because of conflict of interest, et cetera. Now, we don't have that in ours, do we?
No, we don't.
Well, and, and also, I mean, I think that's something that should be in there. Do y'all have any objection to that?
No objection. I mean, it's, it's happened before, pardon? It's happened before, anyway.
Yeah, yeah. And then, I know, if you have the guidelines there.
Sure.
And then, uh, one of the things that troubled me, you know, you talked about the big case, you know, uh, we, it's in here, uh, it says what the Ethics Board can do, um, and the charge, where it's-
That's in 319-
Oh, yeah.
3918.
Oh, here it goes. The Board finds that, what, oh, yeah, "If the Board concludes that a violation of the Code of Ethics has occurred," then it mentions, uh, five things, four, four things, five things that you could do. That's on that, this page you handed out here, uh, the last page of this thing you handed out here. It said, "You can issue an order for the violator to cease and discontinue the violation, or in rightly publicly recommend the violator, or number three, in rightly recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the violator be sanctioned as recommended by the Ethics Board, and may include a recommendation for discipline or dismissal or removal from office for issue an order requiring the violator to pay a civil penalty of, of not more than $1,000. And the fifth one, refer evidence of the criminal violation of the Code of Ethics to the county attorney, or the Commonwealth Attorney for Prosecution." Now, let's see. Okay, then, on 3945, "Standards of Conduct, Number, Number B, 'No Officer or Employee Shall Intentionally Use or Attempt to Use His or Her Official Position with the City to Secure Unwanted Privileges or Advantages for Himself or Herself or Others.'" Now, just a clarification, Mr. Moore, you gotta help me on this one. Who, when you say "an officer," who makes up an officer of the city?
It's, it's in the definitions.
That was, uh, that's in the definitions, and right now, uh, that's any person, whether full-time or part-time, and whether paid or unpaid, who's one of the following. That's the mayor, a legislative body member, so that's a member, a member of the Board of Commissioners, the city clerk, the city manager, any person who occupies a non-elected office created under Care S3A080, and a member of the governing body of any city agency who has been appointed to the governing body of the agency by the city. And my recollection, Dawn, is that we tried to clarify that in our revisions to the ordinance that the Ethics Commission's proposing.
Okay. The reason I bring that up, uh, it enumerated five things that, that the Ethics Board can do on a decision. But I recall, um, in the big case, that the Ethics Board did more than, than just one of those. They, as I recall, I can't find what page, what page it's on, but I believe that the Ethics Board recommended to the Commissioners that we consider giving a raise to one of the persons who brought the charges against one of the people. And to me, when I saw that, I thought, "That's completely out of the scope of what the Ethics Committee should do." Because, because if, where it says, "No Officer or Employee Shall Intentionally Use or Attempt to Use His or Her Official Position to Secure Unwanted Privileges or Advantages from Self or Other, or Others," then the Ethics Committee itself would be doing something unethical by telling this Commission that we should give an employee a raise. And that's just something I, Mr. Moore, am I right on?
Uh, I, I would say that, first of all, I don't think that we ought to talk about that case since it's still on-
I agree. Okay, I won't say the case, but we can talk generically.
I, I think, generically, the, the ordinance right now, 3918, provides, uh, at least five ways that the Ethics Committee or Commission can recommend or impose some type of sanction on the individual that commits the violation. Uh, I, I think it's probably a better practice for the Ethics Commission to just set forth the facts with respect to the person that before the Board, rather than to, uh, rather than to attempt to remedy any, any wrongs that that person may have committed. I think the better practice, I, I will say, though, that if, if the Ethics Commission, and Dawn, you correct me, you're the chairperson, so you've actually been in the trenches, if, if, if I'm doing an ethics investigation and determine, yes, you know, John Doe has committed a violation, but based upon the facts, it looks like he did not act by himself or herself, and there, there were others involved, I would expect the Ethics Commission to either suggest that further investigations warranted, or, or undertake the further investigation itself. But that's a little bit different than that.
I could speak to that, too, Mayor. And I, we don't have that ethics report in front of us. Off the top of my head, that was a, I think we were being notified of a potential violation of 39.22, uh, in the Code of Ethics, which states that "No Officer or Employee of the City or any city agency shall be subject to reprisal or directly or indirectly use or threaten to use any official authority or influence in any manner whatsoever which tends to discourage, restrain, deter, prevent, interfere with, coerce, or discriminate against any person who in good faith reports, discloses, divulges, or otherwise brings to the attention of the Board of Ethics or any other agency or official of the City or the Commonwealth any facts or information relative to an actual or suspected violation of this chapter." And I, I believe that the, uh, and we sorted, we sorted through this, if you recall, Mayor, but I believe that the, uh, the inference was that an employee felt that he was being discriminated against by virtue of having, uh, reported ethics violations. Uh, so, so the question was whether or not his lack of, uh, his lack of a raise when other folks were, were getting them, whether or not that reflected a violation of 39.22. And I think we came to the conclusion that it, that it did not. But, I mean, surely reporting, uh, a potential violation of the Ethics Code to the Commission would not be inappropriate.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sure.
But that's what, they should have stopped it right there. It's a potential violation of this, and ask the Commission to look at it and see if there was something, and not recommend a raise. That's all I'm saying. You know, I think it was inappropriate, or thinks it inappropriate for Ethics Commission to, to represent, you know, that's, that's all, that's all. This is all I have. And I know y'all have done some hard work on that. It's just some things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you all for considering the changes.
Thank you very much.
So where, where does this go from here, as far as?
We read it.
Well, as far as the, these recommendations are concerned. And I, and I'll, well, first of all, Mayor, I guess I'll note that I'm, I'm amenable to your suggestion that we reexamine penalties for making a false statement. I mean, I'd be comfortable keeping it as a raise in the ante. I think that's, that's fine. Uh, do we, do we want to go ahead and, and move on that recommendation and the other recommendations that are made to us, as in, go ahead and direct?
Get a draft written.
Go ahead and direct, except we start preparing a draft.
I'm not gonna be around, so y'all make your decision.
And if I can, you're talking about including what, what the mayor suggested in, uh, developing some guidelines for when someone files an ethics complaint that further expands on the section that, uh, would include filing a, somebody knowingly and willfully filing a false complaint.
Here are the three things that I understood my task was, depending on what you all decide. And one is to, to look at whether or not a, there could be a, a bigger sanction for someone knowingly filing a false complaint. Uh, two would be to require that the complaint be subscribed and sworn to. Uh, and then, just like when you sign a deed or any other document, you subscribe and swear to its truthless. And then also to add provision about allowing, uh, a member of the Commission to recuse him or herself if there's a conflict of interest. And that has been done in the past, where, for example, there was a member on the Ethics Commission that actually resigned when he became a candidate for the City Commission, just because it would have been probably a conflict of interest for him to have been reviewing the statements of financial interest of the folks he was going to be running against. So, and I thought that the person acted entirely appropriately. So those were the three things that I understood. And if you want me to have those ready by next Monday-
What, the third one you said?
Recusal.
Just, just something, giving an Ethics Board member the opportunity to recuse themselves if presented with a conflict of interest.
And, and did you have in there that, um, my last one, I was gonna say, this thing about conflict of interest, is, is there such a thing as ex parte contact? I mean, if a member of the Board would contact the person who's been charged?
Uh-
Without going through the lawyer- With that going through the lawyers?
You could include that, that really is not, that would not be what you would traditionally call a conflict of interest.
But you could put that in here?
You could include it, if y'all, I can include it and let y'all look at it, and we can-
Yeah. But when the person is charged, the person does, and they get them an attorney, and then the Board has an attorney, now is it not true that any contact or discussion about this between any Board member and the person who's been charged, all the contact conversations go through the attorneys?
Generally, the contact should be through attorneys, that's correct.
Well, that's what I was just trying to say.
Or, if you're contacting the person directly, it should be in the hearing process.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. To me, that should be included, too. I don't know if y'all have that thing.
There are sometimes when attorneys are not involved, and so the Ethics Board deals directly with the individuals to get information or whatever about the case, because there are always, we've dismissed three cases, and no attorney was involved in any of the three of them.
I just, I just think there should be something there about the contact should be through attorney to attorney.
I mean, I would say an attorney or authorized representative. If Ethics Board wants to authorize a member to make those contacts, I don't think that's inappropriate.
About that, yeah.
I think Bill had something there.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say that sometimes folks that may not want or feel like they need an attorney could represent themselves if they, or waive their right to attorney. But just, I guess, in, just saying, in accordance with rules, pursuant to Kentucky Rules of Civil Procedure, does that cover that?
We could, I'll look to see whether it's the Rules of Civil Procedure, or whether it be the Rules of Kentucky Bar Association.
Or one of those.
Commissioner May, and Mr. Moore, you can correct me, but doesn't the ordinance say that the Ethics Board does not operate under Rules of Civil Procedure?
I'd have to, they do not in terms of holding the hearing.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Because you don't use the formal Rules of Evidence.
And the reason I suggested that was, instead of having to rewrite rules for attorneys, that the attorneys are going to follow anyway, under things like Kentucky Bar Association, they're almost always going to just follow those automatically. If that helps, just trying to be helpful.
Right, no, I'll look at the KBA rules and see if there's something that we can pull over. But, you know, generally, where someone's represented by counsel, then the attorney should be the one that's contacted. When someone's not represented by counsel, then the person that's involved can't be contacted directly.
And I guess the same thing under, if, in some situations, depending on what, if it was an officer of, for example, in the Police Department, then you go into 15530, which is the Policeman's Bill of Rights, would it, and it would automatically default to that, correct? Without saying that-
If it's just an ethics violation and not, that would be interesting where the Board of Ethics attempted to impose discipline, because in that case, then it, perhaps it would involve the provisions of KRS Chapter 15.
And that's why I was wondering, would it automatically default to 15530?
If it comes from a citizen's complaint, yes, we have to.
So I don't know if that needs to be addressed. When we first worked on this ordinance,
15520.
495-ish, somewhere, 93, 94, or something, in that range, we knew that we were going to come back and tweak this ordinance.
Would a police officer, I mean, be counted into the definition of an officer? Is that even relevant? We don't have KRS 83A.
I think that 83A talks about city manager, city clerk.
I think those were like city officers. I think we defined them as city officers, and included department heads as city officers.
But it wouldn't be, police officers aren't subject to ethics complaints, are they? Nobody can file an ethics complaint against a police officer.
Yeah.
Except for maybe the chief.
No, I think that's it. I think the ethics would be for any employee of the city. Well, it would make no difference if they wore it or weren't.
Or if they go about, or if they go with the board.
Or their family members. It'd be their family. 39.05, I think, includes all those.
Okay. And then we also do, we also have agreement on the recommendations made to us by the Ethics Board regarding, it's not like we didn't have any objection to the number of members and to recommendations that were made.
Well, okay, we pretty much-
Can I just point out that the Ethics Commission has met, you know, several times to discuss this and put a lot of work in, and I just want, I know you all appreciate that, but I just wanted to mention that one more time.
Oh, yeah, we appreciate it. It's not an easy task to handle that.
Thanks to all of them.
We're highly paid.
It's not a treasure. All right. I believe we've exhausted the, of Bill.
I move we go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61810/177 to discuss personnel, possible appointment, or they could leave the possible appointment of personnel.
Got a second?
Second.
Colonel Hall.
Commissioner Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden. Yes? Commissioner May?
Yes.
May Brown.
Yes, we will, in closed session.
It can lead to the invisible opponent hiring. Well, that's-
I think it's going to be a struggle for me to get that applicable, but it's pretty tough to get the provisions to the Ethics Board.
I can do some of this, but I'll make sure that's in closed session.